This is August 13th meeting of the Esteban Planning Commission order. Stand.
I love the peace of the United States of America and to the reward for which it stands, the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the roll call.
Commissioner Wyler.
Here.
Commissioner Cohen.
Here.
Commissioner Romo.
Here.
Commissioner Span.
Here.
Commissioner McNair.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia.
Here.
Here.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes or comments about the minutes?
I move to approve the minutes from the last planning commission hearing on July 23rd with a change on page three. One of the public speakers was Brian Wilson and he actually spoke in favor of the proposed project. And that's the only one.
Second.
Okay, written communication?
Thank you Chair Span. There are three pieces of communication that's offered to each commission member. Two correspondences relate to the first public hearing, item G1. One is provided by the city staff which will be covered during the presentation. The other is from Brendan McCarthy, resident of the community. For item G2, there is one correspondence that relates to the conditions of approval recommending modification and that also will be covered during the presentation.
Thank you. Future neighborhood meetings? None. Oral communication, if anybody in the audience wishes to speak about something that's not on tonight's agenda, okay, seeing none, we'll go right to the public hearing. Before we start the public hearing, does anybody up here have anything to disclose? Seeing none, G1, PHG 19-0012. Pro.
Evening Commissioner Span, or Chair Span, I'm sorry. Adam Finestone, Principal Planner. I have also got Jasmine Brunovich. She's an assistant planner here with the City of Escondido. She's been the main project planner for this project. So she's available here for additional information and questions that may come up. What we have in front of us, the project tonight, is a request for a conditional use permit for a large residential care facility for the elderly at an existing single-family residence at 2512 Heather Place in the R110 zone. A conditional use permit would change an existing small residential care facility for the elderly to a large residential care facility for the elderly from six to 12 residents. Existing structure is 2,450 square feet. The addition proposed in order to accommodate the expansion would be 1,656 square feet project or the site, the home there would remain, a single-story home. The project is major conditional use permit and requires approval by the planning commission because the expansion of the property or of the structure on the site exceeds 50 percent of the size of the existing structure. If it were smaller than that, it would be considered through the zoning administrator, but based on the size, it does require approval through the planning commission. Property here located at 2512 Heather Place, it's generally in the vicinity of Citrus and Baravella Parkway. Site plan, as you see, shows the existing home, that's the area I'm circling here with my mouse. The proposed addition here, so existing home is 2,500, give or take. There'd be a new 1,600 square foot addition. There is a proposed pad here to accommodate additional parking on the site or two additional vehicles. There'd also be some decorative landscaping and/or decorative wall proposed along the side here on the north end of the property to screen that new parking area. There is also, as should be noted, a 27-foot wide easement of sorts that runs through the back here. That's why the structure here is truncated as such and has that little diagonal to it. There's an easement, I believe it's a drainage easement, that runs through that area, so the property owner and applicant had to avoid any structures, put any structures into that area. Project and the addition does meet all the requirements for setbacks in the R110 zone and also for lot coverage. Lot coverage maximum allowance is 40 percent. The project comes in somewhere in the range of approximately 27 percent. As you'll see here on the floor plan, the existing area, which is generally where I'm circling, it has four bedrooms, three bathrooms. There's six residents currently being served at the existing facility. The expansion would add another five bedrooms and two bathrooms and another six residents total. So you would go from four bedrooms, three baths with six beds to nine bedrooms, five bathrooms, and 12 beds. Basically, you have three rooms that have two beds in them, the other six rooms would be singles. The elevations here show that the project and the property will have very similar treatment and architectural design to the existing home. It's basically a wing that comes off of the left side here on the east elevation and then kind of circles around the back, as you saw here on the site plan. It's coming off this way and circling around back there. Few photos here of the site show the existing home. The new addition would come off of the side here and circle around to the back of it. And looking at this one, it's this side here, more or less, would be where that addition would take place. Operational characteristics of facilities such as this, they provide 24-hour care 365 days a week, days a year, I'm sorry, for the 12 residents or at this point, six residents that are living there or that's just 12. The existing facility has two caregivers that are on-site during the day. One caregiver lives on-site, is available overnight, and there is a part-time administrator who comes to the property approximately four hours each day. The expansion would more or less double those numbers. You'd have four daytime caregivers, two nighttime caregivers, and the administrator would be on-site full-time eight hours. Staff did receive phone calls from two residents and one email, as you've been provided up there at the dais, with concerns on the project and in opposition to the project. Concerns cited involved employees and visitors of the site, parking on already busy streets or basically taking up parking that's already in short supply, that the expansion would even further reduce that. Increased traffic and noise from employees, residents, and visitors, decreased property values, and the incompatibility with the residential zoning designation. Should be noted that staff has proposed a revision to one of the conditions of approval as outlined in the written communication that Jasmine Brunovich here provided you. In, I think it's condition number nine, which stipulates that in addition to the existing language, it states that "in no case shall employees park on the public street or in the driveway," and that the holder of the conditional use permit shall make the premises available for inspection by city staff during operational hours to verify conformance with this condition. So staff believes that that would help alleviate the concerns that are out there regarding the parking issues on the street. Increased traffic and noise from employees and residents. As far as traffic, the facility would generate approximately 15 additional trips beyond what a typical single-family home currently generates. That's not considered to be a significant impact and a significant increase based on standards in our traffic guidelines. And as far as decreased property values, we don't have any evidence, one way or another, that a facility such as this would create that decrease. Additionally, if the facility were to vacate the property, it would just continue to be as existing single-family home, a large one, but it would be an existing single-family home. Residential zoning does allow a large residential care facility for the elderly, up to 12 residents, through the conditional use permit, and staff believes that going through that process and getting this conditional use permit would create compatibility with zoning and neighborhood uses. The benefit to the conditional use permit that is not available and not in existence with the existing small residential care facility is that there are conditions that the city can apply and that can be monitored and used for consideration. Small residential care facilities are mandated by the state of California to be allowed. The city has no discretion in whether we do or do not allow a small residential care facility for the elderly. So in, to some extent, creating a large facility gives the city a little more ability to, and a little more leeway to request conditions or to apply conditions and get things in line with what the needs of the city are. With that, staff recommends adopting Planning Commission Resolution Number 2019-16, which would approve conditional use permit for the residential care facility for the elderly at 2512 Heather Place, including the revision to condition number nine. It's noted in the written correspondence, as well as incorporating Exhibit D, which was unfortunately left out of the resolution that you had received, the draft resolution, but it's included here for reference. It is identical to the large-scale sets of plans that were provided to you. Staff would be happy to answer any questions that the commission may have at this time.
One of the communications said that this, if it was not a RSC, residential care facility, it could become a halfway house. Do they require CPUs?
They do, yes.
Or rehab or anything like that?
They do. Anything that's a state licensed facility would. One thing that I don't believe in, and as we're having this discussion, the comments that we received were, came in this afternoon, and we didn't have a chance to fully go through everything, but we should also recommend, staff would also recommend, the conditions stating that the approvals specifically for a residential care facility for the elderly is not able to be changed without coming back, changed to another type of care facility without coming back for additional review and modification of the CP.
Thank you.
Through the chair, if I may supplement the response. So small care facilities, which are preempted by state law, very broad definition of what would constitute as a care facility, so it could include a transitory to housing for special populations, medical treatment as broadly defined by state law. So when the occupancy increases above six, that's when a special permitting can be issued by the local agency. So in this event, staff is able to ensure that its operational characteristics are addressed through the condition compliance, but also to ensure the occupancy is established for that senior population, so that there are some controls in place rather than falling under the state permission of pretty much anything that can be issued by the state.
If I could follow up on that. So what you're saying is that with a small residential care facility, the broad definition that the state puts on it could possibly include a lot more than elderly care?
For a small care facility, which is six persons or less, yes. I could.
But once you go over, what's the magic number?
Seven or more persons.
So seven or more, and then it would require special?
Through the local agency.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Excuse me. So if this place did end up having a change of heart and moved, somebody could come in there and rent those nine rooms individually as a small apartment, and they would still be underneath. Would they be needing conditional use since I live in one room and I ran out all eight other ones? So I believe that that would be considered a boarding house based on our definitions of our zoning ordinance. I don't have full knowledge of that. I'm not aware of the answer for sure. I do know that it still is a single-family home as far as the rental of multiple rooms to different individuals. I'm not aware of the condition, but I hope you've got the zoning ordinance available.
I don't, but to respond to that question, there are quite a few homes in the City of Escondido that have more than five bedrooms, and there's no prohibition or limit to exercise that property.
Right.
So there is nothing to preclude an owner from pursuing that. In this instance, should the use discontinue in a transition to a single-family home, then that's how it would be operated. Should a future property owner want to use it as a large care facility, they would have to come in and renew the condition or the CP and abide by those conditions unless they're modified for the planning condition.
Did you have a question?
Just a couple of quick ones. Thank you for the presentation. Just curious, what's the level of care there? Do we know if there's assisted living? Because I saw in the drawings that it says, it's grammatically incorrect, but it says all patients, non-ambulatory. Do we know what level of care it is? Perhaps the applicant?
I think that the applicant could probably speak to that during their, during the public ...
Okay.
You know, you're going to speak during the public testimony, and we'll ask you that, okay?
Bless you.
When we call you up, you can answer that. Thank you.
Is there now or under a separate permit, is there any kind of a sign plan?
You said sign plan? There's not. Any signage would be required to abide by the residential zoning requirements within the sign ordinance. I think it's highly minimal, a couple of square feet.
Four extra square meters. One other question, I think I did read through the pack, and it's very well put together, but I thought, and I could be wrong. Existing residents does not have fire sprinklers, but does have a fire alarm. But then I thought I read something here that said they are required to do sprinklers. Maybe I did. What's the scale?
So if fire sprinklers are required, that they will be installed prior to any, or as part of the addition. It's determination through the fire department and the building division as far as whether that is or is not required. I believe the fire department is aware of it, or I know that they're aware that this project will be happening, and when they see the building plans come through, they'll make sure that fire sprinklers are included if that's necessary. Thanks for your attention.
Couple of quick questions. For clarity, how many parking spaces are there, will there be, according to the plan onsite?
There would be a total of six.
A total of six. And any of those parking spaces are for visitors or their staff?
So the conditions would require that staff park in the garage, and then if there's more than two staff vehicles, that they park on the concrete pad around the back there. The spaces in the driveway specifically would be reserved for visitors. Hypothetically, you'd probably get a third car in there. It would impede access, getting to or from the pad in the back, but if a resident or guests came, they could hypothetically put three cars in the driveway.
And one of those six required spaces, are those including the ones in the garage?
Yes.
And one of those spaces is an ADA?
The requirement is going to be, is that one of the spaces be ADA compatible, so I guess backing off of what I just said about a third vehicle in the driveway, that space could be used for an ADA compatible pad, et cetera.
And having seven employees and requiring them to park and knowing that likely we have one visitor maybe, let's say, have a slow day, are we requiring enough parking?
So the code requires one parking space for every three beds. In this case, we're required, or they're providing one for every two beds. So it does meet and actually exceed by 50 percent of the code requirement.
Thank you.
What is the access for any kind of emergency vehicle or emergency evacuation?
Fire department and/or other emergency services would stage in the cul-de-sac in front of the property. I also didn't notice any landscape plans or anything with that. Pretty bleak yard when I look at it right now. Is there going to be a condition of that to be landscaped and maintained? So there are conditions requiring landscaping to be provided along the, I think it's the northern property line where the new parking pad would be and the new driveway. That'll help screen that area from the adjacent property that's to the north there. There's nothing that's specifically been identified for landscaping elsewhere on the site, however, the commission feels that that's appropriate, that conditions can be added to that effect. Since it is a commercial site, can we go ahead and condition if you need to do landscaping, do? At your discretion, definitely can.
Are there any other questions, staff? Seeing none, now we'll open the public hearing. I have speaker slips here. I'd like to ask you to please keep your comments to three minutes, and when you come to the podium, if you'd state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Jake Enriquez. I live at 430 South Orleans Avenue, and with respect to Mr. or Mrs. Randall over here, I think you've heard my name. I'm here speaking today in opposition to this conditional use permit. I think some issues have been raised here tonight that aren't in the staff report. If they weren't in the staff report, it raises the question of if they're in the staff recommendation. The public concern slide I put out there pretty much covers, I think, what most people think are going to be the impacts initially. Traffic, parking. There is an issue of noise that comes from this building. There's a significant amount of noise, and you'll hear that from the other property owners that live on Heather Place. If you increase to nine rooms and 12 residents, just as any other impact would increase, you have to make the logical assumption that the noise is going to increase as well. And I would ask the commissioners to give consideration to that. There's been, I'm not really sure that the commissioners don't feel that this needs to be rubber stamped tonight. There are some things that brought up, and we'd like to see expanded on in the report, specifically the landscaping. If it is an empty condition, let's go ahead and have that conditioned. Let's see the landscaping plans, please. If there is a concern for signage now or in the future, can we include that in the report, and can we have that be part of the staff recommendation, what the commissioners Right now, what we're living with is a commercial business activity in our neighborhood. I've lived there since 1998. It's a very nice neighborhood. I would say this is a group of middle-class, tax-paying Escondidas who are proud of our neighborhood. It's what we can afford, it's where we're raising our kids, and we're going to school, and it's where we have our lives here in Escondido. The applicant of the property has a noble cause, but I would ask the commissioners to give consideration to the fact that there are many vacant, commercial, and medical buildings throughout Escondido. By issuing a CPU for this type of project is encouraging business owners and proponents of the project, the applicant, to go seek residential neighborhoods with this type of zoning, with this type of commercial activity. I would ask the commissioners to give consideration to that and put some thought into maybe encouraging this type of land use to go where it really should be in a commercial area. There's also been questions raised about ADA parking, what that counts towards, the ratio, over the ratios in the report, but the reality is if you have four staff members that live working there and an operator there, now we're up to five people, and you have guests and you have visitors, they're going to be in the street very quickly. It would be a shame if people have to come home and have their son or daughter, any member of their family, park around the corner or down the street because the City of Escondido has allowed this type of property use and expansion, this CPU here. In closing, I would say that this is a wildflower neighborhood. It was once the pride, one of the pride neighborhoods of Escondido back in 77 and 78 when it was being built now. There is a property owner involved in this situation, and I respectfully try to pronounce the name as Hamid and Ari Montezar. If you look at the documentation, Montezar's who live at 3255 Heaven Road, which is in the Euripus Springs subdivision, which is now a very nice subdivision, and is one of the projects of Escondido. I would ask the commissioners to give consideration to this situation where what is the likelihood that a CPU for this type of activity is ever going to be conditioned within these walls of maintenance in the Euripus Springs neighborhood? As sure as I'm standing here, I don't think it will ever happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Chris?
My name is Chris Kaiser. 2536 Heather Place, been there since 1990. Maybe you want a link in here. But just very, very much as Jay said, everything he says that I also agree with, however, I'm also going to, that if there's ADA parking in the garage, I don't think there'll be, because I would think they have four parks over abandoned. Because the second space inside that garage is a rolled-down room. So I don't think that fits. So it's like two spots. Need the ADA ingress and the roof. So that's the one thing I can only have. Again, thank you, Jake. It was very, very well done. Well done.
Thank you.
Michael Van Lynch. I live on 2525 Heather Place, been there since 1994. 25 years, raised my family there. Always been a single-family resident. I have the same concerns as everybody else, the traffic, parking. Parking is not very really good. Traffic is not only employees, which I think seems to be the sincere, in a typical daily nurse is coming in and out of there, doctors coming in and out of there, insurance companies, representatives coming in and out of there, welfare-type people coming in and out of their checkups, and visitors, and also. So I don't think four or five spaces of parking is sufficient. Already, I park in front of my house. I park in front of the car. I go home from work. Sometimes there's no parking. Already, we had double that. I don't think that's right. Also, the traffic, same thing. It's not just the patients, it's not just visitors. You've got these doctors, nurses, insurance companies, I can do their A. And I agree with everything that Jay said, also, as well. It's very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I never, I live at 2520 Heather Place, which is immediately next door to this facility. The noise level is intolerable at six people. The traffic is god-awful. They not only park in the parking lot, but they block my driveway, especially in the emergency vehicles, because there's nowhere there, it extends into, there's nowhere I can get in and out of my driveway while they're there. That's a problem. And the parking, it's, I know you're providing places, but they're not. They can't possibly use the garage. Well, you already addressed that. My other concern is, I've lived there since December 1984. It's my retirement thing, and what that large facility is going to do to my property value frankly scares the hell out of me. I believe that you live in our neighborhood. Would you want that large facility next door to you? All that, I mean, building. And who would want to live there? Even if you tried to rent a place, you want to live next door to a facility like that? I don't understand how they can call it a single-family building. It's not.
Hi, thank you very much for giving me a chance to speak. That's Gary Groenbergh, and he owns the property of two thousand and twenty. We need to have a place. First of all, today, I do thank the people for businesses like this. I've had my folks over, my mom and dad, very good parents, that was the license place that place. And we went visiting them quite often. There's times my son would go, I would go, my wife would go. We'd go on through the other vehicles, and we could see. I think you brought up the fact that there is, there is one parking space that you had, I believe that's what you said. One parking space that you had. My father, I went there, we'd go there, and sometimes two of your cars would go there. When you think of all the cars and the traffic that's on that street, the caretakers going there, doctors, people visiting and fixing things, or making money, or whatever the deal is, and the people visiting, they're their families. It's a lot of traffic. You know, I think this is just a situation, and I ask the commission to really look at the fact of, it's one thing having a six-bedroom place in a downtown neighborhood, but taking it to this level, expanding like that, it's just more, it seems like more of a commercial application. There's plenty of other places out in Esteniedo that could be also informed about, you know, taking advantage of what I think would be a safer for all of the residents there. It's just the traffic. If you want to address the concerns of a nine-bedroom place, I have lived in a neighborhood before with a nine-bedroom place. If it turns into a residential place also, tell me how many families are going to be living, one family in a nine-bedroom place? If they do, usually if they grow older, everyone's got a car. I mean, you talk to six, seven, eight cars. I know, I know four better places that have nine or ten cars. There's usually two or three families living in a five-bedroom place. Now, it's how many could live in a nine-bedroom place? And I think we all asked ourselves the question, probably agreed, quite a few cars, and quite a few people would be living, even if it did turn into a residential home. It's just that, that whole sector is not set up for that much traffic from that many of these disturbed people. I'm highly opposed against it. I really have both thoughts with other people who've spoken. Thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you. Anthony Barber.
Hello, I'm Anthony Barber, and I'm opposed to this. I've lived in this house all my life. It's a very nice neighborhood, and my concern with is parking, it already is a problem. I had a mom having to park down the corner and having her safety, so from walking around the corner to the house. Another thing is, is I'll be in the garage sometimes, and it's not a gated residence, so we have people that live there come up to our house, asking them to take them a ride. I have one of my friends, and we had another lady asking one of my friends to call the police. We don't know why. The residents can only do so much. They can't refuse, of course, you know, so the only thing they do is either kind of seem like they just wait it off, or wait until, I guess, they're ready to go back into the house. It's been a problem, you know, it's a problem right now. And if it keeps going, it's going to be wrong, and I'll say.
Thank you. Matthew Jumper.
Sir, I'm here for item two.
Leave you speaking on the other item. Sorry. Now, the applicant. And if I could get you to fill out one of the speaker slips before you leave tonight, and get this up here.
My name is Hamid Muntazer, and Arnie and I, we all own the place. And we used to have this facility in Eighth Avenue, and they moved us out of there because they wanted to short-sell it. And I was able to buy this property in two thousand and eleven, and request from a community care licensing a transfer, and were able to bring our three clients to this facility. And for many years, we had like three or four clients, and basically, we were operating at the lowest level possible. And then the last two years, we had six clients, and our clients are surviving and living, and they are severe dementia people, most of them. One is bedridden, complete Alzheimer, and only one of the client was able to walk a long time, and she, in the beginning, she had problems adjusting to the facility, and we cannot lock people in the house. So they're allowed to exit, but we follow, we, you know, make sure they're safe, and they're, you know, what's called, welfare, well-being is there. And about noise, I do not, we do not run an asylum. Elder people, they have dementia, they are not noisy. I'm not sure they're talking about radio noise, people screaming, what kind of noise? I mean, in a household, a kid generates more noise than an elderly. So the noise that they're talking about, I do not understand where it's coming from. Where, I have a record of all the visits there since August twelve, August, August second, we only had eleven, you know, visits to our facility. Everybody comes to the facility, they had to log in their incoming and outgoing time. And during this time, we may have had a once-a-day medication delivery. They come and, you know, they drop in the medication, and they leave, and they park in the driveway. And seldom, we have, you know, party that we invite our client's, you know, family to come and, you know, celebrate with us, that we have in the backyard. At those instances, if the new facility goes on, we will guide everybody inside, you know, the parking area, the concrete area, and we will not have anybody parking the street. So all I'm saying is, the reason for expansion of this facility is because we have had people coming from the same neighborhood that are not in position, and requesting, you know, to put their elderly in our facility. And we haven't had, you know, vacancies the last two years, and it's becoming, you know, kind of like my conscience, that how can I serve these people? We try to, the gentleman that came here and complained, and he's my next door neighbor, he had his house for rent, and I requested that, you know, can be, you know, rented, and so we can convert it to an elderly facility. And he had denied, said, no, I do not rent it to a business. And we are not a business, we are a residence. People live there. People live in their room, they sleep there. Caregivers are there to provide if something goes wrong, to provide for them bathing, you know, change of, what you call it, clothes, change of, what you call it, if they have a continent. So we are a resident, we are not a facility that is running and letting people live, you know, come and go and have families there. And our caregivers live there, they do not have cars. They, none of our caregivers have cars. They live there, and other caregivers, they get it right from their friends to come and work in the facility, and then they leave when they're finished. And so the traffic and the noise is, I do not understand. I accept that one occasion, one of our clients that was new, went to a neighbor's house and asked for a ride, because she was disoriented with her severe dementia in the beginning. And now she's, you know, oriented, and she's living in the facility. So I do not really understand why all these concerns about noise and traffic.
Did you have a question? Thank you. We do have one question for you. It was alluded to that the garage would not hold two cars. Is there a bedroom built into the garage?
No, there is no bedroom built in the garage. We have a storage place. Our facility requires that we store for three days of, you know, wet food, and a whole week of dry food. And we store a lot of our cleaning and stuff in the facility. So I had created a separation from the car to that place, so they may think it's a room, but it's not a room.
Okay. What is a room for two cars in that garage?
There is room for two-car garage. It's a room for two-car garage if I leave all the materials that I have in there. I have, it says using it as a storage place.
I have a question, sir. So right now, you're using the garage area for storage?
Half of the garage is using as a storage, and the other half is used for a car parking car.
Okay. If, if this gets approved, I think we're looking at having two cars to be able to park in that garage. So where is it that you will put all your materials that you currently store in the garage?
The proposed plan shows four parking spots in the back of the yard, and two car in the driveway. So I'm not sure why do we need to put two cars in the garage. I cannot allow visitors to come and park in the garage. We have one car that we park in the garage, and nobody else lives there that has a car.
Okay, thank you.
One more thing. Just concerns me that you don't think this is a business. Do you collect money from the people that are there?
Well, I would say business is a place that you have people come and go to get their business going. So a resident compared to a business, the difference is, you live there. You, it's a boarding care. You do not, I mean, people, they do not come to our facility to get treated or something, and they leave. It's not a come-and-go place. They live there. They, twenty-four-seven, you know, like I said, six of our clients, they're there the last two years. They live there. I mean, it's the difference between, you have a business that you serve people, and they have parts outside, come and get their, you know, business serviced and then go.
Right, your business is taken care of. You have to stay that way. Yes. I just looked back at the presentation and said, two additional parking places are on the north side.
We showed the schematic, and they showed these four parking spots in the back.
If I may, the pad area in the back is twenty feet by twenty-four feet, which would accommodate two peoples.
So you don't really have six parking places?
If the, if it's in fact the case that part of the garage is currently used for storage purposes, which that is not appropriate, then yes, that is correct. We don't have this.
But you say code requires four.
Code requires four, however, there are conditions that would require the garage to be used for employee parking, and storage would not be something that could be allowed as part of the garage use. Thank you.
Any other questions to the applicant? Thank you. Okay, that's all the speaker slips I have. If somebody that hasn't spoke, wishes to speak on this. And again, if you'd state your name for the record and fill out a speaker slip before you leave.
Hello, my name is Ron Shug, and I rent a room from Debbie, which is the next door neighbor to where I own, that's Harry. Harry is a good man. You know, I like Harry, he's a good, good man. I don't have nothing against him, but what's going on here is that he's not there good at nighttime. He's here through the day, and does what he has to do, and he's got to take care of what he's got to do. But now, I could have called many times, because I didn't want to start no problems in the neighborhood, because I just rent a room. What Harry doesn't understand is, I sit in the back porch, and I smoke cigarettes, beat myself, and what I hear from the neighbors over there is very alarming. He's got workers in there that's supposed to be there to help these people. Well, and I'm not going to lie, and I wouldn't mind if you cared, but there's been several occasions that I've been at home at home because of being disturbed by the woman calling for help in that house, and no one has came to help her, no one. She stayed there all night, and I gritted my teeth and bit my tongue. I started to go in and check to find out what was going on, but I didn't. Am I saying that? Yes, I am. But I didn't want to start no problems, because I'm just renting a room from this Debbie Roddy. There's times that people have come out of that house, the owners of the place don't know what's going on here when they're not there. There was a woman that came out of that house and proceeded to walk down the road. The helper was sitting there peeking around the corner, off his arms, gazing at this woman to see what was going on. And this woman was asking me to take her home, and she's asking the neighbor boy that was up here, this folk, to help me. Same thing. And the woman was peeking around the corner, not fully showing herself. What kind of help is that? Let something like that go on, and I had to holler at her to come and get this woman. When I turned around, she finally came out and came and got her. That's not helping. That's letting somebody do what they want to do, like they're at their own line. As Harry says, they're not supposed to, they're not in a good line, which I know they're not. But you don't let people out of that house that'll walk out to the street and confront somebody about their rights. We're talking only people that are older than you guys and myself. I love what Harry and Arnie are doing for these people, but they don't know what's going on twenty-four-seven. If he was to stay there twenty-four-seven, I don't think he would let that happen, but it does happen. I'm not lying about it, I don't have no reason to lie about it. But for this sake, I had been in the driveway where I'm renting a room and couldn't get out because of so many businesses. And when I leave, I go to the grocery store, because I am disabled. I go to the grocery store, and I come home, and I can't even park at home, the parking place is where I'm supposed to park and get in my car. It is a problem. Now, there is a lot of noise there. Harry doesn't know about it, but most of the time, it's after they leave. So there's something that's going to have to happen. And to me, I'm like a resident people. It is a business. He does make money from these people. It's a business, it's not a home. I'm proud that he does what he does, but the neighborhood is not designed for this kind of setup. That's a commercial business. It's not worth it then. If he was to stay there 24/7, I don't think he would let that happen. But it does happen. I'm not lying about it. I don't have any reason to lie about it. But for this sake, I had been in the driveway where I'm renting a room and couldn't get out because of so many businesses. And when I leave, I go to the grocery store because I am disabled. I go to the grocery store and I come home and I can't even park at home, park at the place where I'm supposed to park and get in my car. It is a problem. Now, there is a lot of noise there. Harry doesn't know about it most of the time. It's after they leave. So there's something that's gonna have to happen. And to me, I'm like a resident people. It is a business. He does make money from these people. It's a business. It's not a home. I'm proud that he does what he does, but the neighborhood is not designed for this kind of setup. That's a commercial business. It's not worth attending. Thank you for your.
Thank you. Okay, does anybody else that hasn't spoken wish to speak? See, none of them close the public hearing. I just closed the public hearing. I wish you'd have said something. I don't, do you have something that's gonna shed new light on what we're talking about? Or are you just gonna refute some of them that have said?
She wanted to talk about the country last time they were there.
Okay, I'm gonna give you three minutes and that's it.
My name is Arnie Montezur and I'm the administrator of the Crossroads Home Care. Thank you very much for sharing your time. And we've been in, what I'm saying to, what I've known as a dementia patient is, is a long process. If they come here, they come in our facility, we need to assess them and then we have to do, like behavior, we have to observe what's their behavior. And if they don't, if they don't, if they are not fit in our facility, in our boarding care, then we have a 30-day notice to notify the family, okay? And to make arrangement to further reassess a particular resident. So that's, we are in the guidelines with the licensing. So we want to make sure that our residents are fit in where they feel that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Again, the public hearing is closed. Before we get on with the commission discussion, I just want to clarify something with the city attorney. I do live in the neighborhood, several blocks away. This does not affect my property value. I don't even drive through the neighborhood except to go to garage sales. I don't feel like I have accused myself. What is your feeling?
If you're 100 feet away and it kind of impacts you differently than anyone else, I don't know what impact your decision is that you need to take into account in terms of whether you feel like you should recuse yourself or not.
I'm not looking to.
Well, I can certainly appreciate what the, what the property owner is trying to do. My parents ran one of these facilities. I know how it's operated. I know that the clients or the residents that stay there, they like that sort of atmosphere as opposed to some sort of institutional type of facility where there are 50, 100 people. So it's a different type of person that really, and family, that wants to have their elderly people live in that sort of arrangement. Now, when I visited over there, I didn't see a lot of people coming and visiting. All of the residents that were there, they were elderly, non-ambulatory, on the beginning stages of Alzheimer's and dementia, and they just didn't have very many visitors. Now, there were occasions where family members would come and there would be several cars. So I do fully understand how these facilities operate. My concern is the parking and the comings and going. It's located at the end of a cul-de-sac. I know how cul-de-sacs are. There's limited parking. So I do have that concern. Before I cast my vote or even show support or not support, I would like to hear what my fellow commissioners have to say.
I appreciate what it is you do. Everyone needs a place to stay, no matter what stage of your life it is. I live in a cul-de-sac. And I lived, my neighbor at the time, most recently, had rented out some rooms to where there was probably five people living or six people living in the house. I shared the same problem with people parking in front of my own driveway. And this wasn't a home care facility, this was just people visiting. So I understand that and I feel that that's probably a very large problem that needs to be addressed and it's also, it's only gonna get worse with more people. And it's not anything against what you do, but there are other people around you that have to deal with what you do. And I think taking it to the next level is only gonna make it that much worse.
Okay, well, I understand the needs for these type of facilities. And my mother, before she passed, had moved. I also lived on a cul-de-sac at one time and understand what parking and what a problem is. Where, the thing I think about on this is I look at my neighborhood and say, what if this were next door to me? Would I want them to double the size of the house next door to me and create a parking problem? So I haven't made up my mind yet, but it seems like it's going to add more problems to the neighborhood. And I do appreciate that the neighborhood showed up to give their opinion.
You're not giving up your storage in the garage. You said that too. You said you're gonna park four cars in the back. You can't put four cars back there. So there's just simply not enough parking. And based on your own conversation with us, you've indicated there won't be. So at this point, with the neighbors' concerns and what you've indicated is happening, I have a difficult time looking any other way but to say where these folks can park. And if there is people coming up one at a time even to drop off their medications, it's still impacting it. So I just have a challenge right now with your parking. And based on your own conversation, you've indicated you're not giving up the garage. And you think there's more spaces in back and there's not. And you don't have your ADA and it's just not coming up to what this needs to be at this point at least.
Yeah, to clarify, they do or do not now, based on tonight's discussion, hit the number?
Well, based on the fact that the garage is currently being used for storage, that reduces the number by one. If you need to provide an ADA space, that may reduce it by another one, that would get us to four, which is the minimum requirement for the potential care for the proposed facility. So even with what they've said and the inconsistencies that we've heard, they still do meet the That said, it does sound like there's additional where there's more concern than regarding the parking situation. And if that's something that needs to be addressed in more detail, potentially could be, there could be a potential for requiring a larger pad in the back there for additional parking spaces. But yeah, it does not sound like the information that we've been provided is in line with what we've heard tonight, so.
Another, another, I guess, observation, Commissioner Romo made it originally, it was on my mind as well. The landscape is struggling, is the adjective that comes to mind, based on pictures we've seen, I assume they're recent, but it, I didn't see in the set, I didn't see a formal landscape set of an L-series of plans, but it kind of goes back to, gosh, we talked about this a couple of meetings, command shows, you need to show suited up, ready to play, and best foot forward. So even, I guess I'm just sharing this, I suppose, now with my fellow commissioners, but the pictures I saw do not show best foot forward. And I guess I could look past that, but I didn't see an L-series of plans either. And I guess where I'm going with that is, if this were to advance, I would certainly endorse something if the conditions ever says, let's clean up that hardpan surface or somewhere landscaping. I mean, that was the answer right off of that. So landscaping and parking seem to be the themes. Well, parking certainly, but and noise, but that would be mine and I would go along with sort of what Commissioner Romo said. You've got the landscape back for that as well. Thank you.
If I could ask staff, is there the ability through existing code to add, widen the driveway that goes into the garage, to provide extra parking? And could extra parking be provided in the back?
Sure. So there is an ability to potentially widen the driveway only to one side, which it would be the side basically closest from the garage to that property line. So it would be that northern side where the access drive to the rear already is. So really to be able to provide that as a parking space, it then blocks access to the other parking spaces in the rear. However, there is definitely an ability to require, if you so desire, additional parking spaces on a pad in the back there that can back the condition.
If I can say something before we go any further, I think we're overlooking the basic problem here, and that is the character of this neighborhood. And now we're looking at putting in, paving the front with concrete so that we can get, come up with parking. I drove by the residence. A couple of things concern me. As far as being a good neighbor, I think that the place should have been landscaped and looking really good right now, which it is not. It's in, it's in a situation on the cul-de-sac where there's, nobody's gonna want to drive to the back of the property and park if it's raining, for whatever reason, they don't wanna do it. I can see that the street is gonna be plugged up even worse than a typical cul-de-sac street. The beauty of this house, and I certainly appreciate what you're doing, my mother has dementia, she's living with us, and it's a full-time job, it really is. People should be with their relatives or in a residential setting like this. It is far better for everybody than a big commercial place. And I think what you're doing right now is great. When you start doubling the size, you are taking a residential neighborhood and you're putting a full-blown business in there. And it is a business because it is making money. It's a, it's a home occupation technically. I don't, I don't see the value in taking this nice neighborhood that's performing now with what you've got going and doubling the size of that, the residents there. You can swear that you're not gonna park on the street, but I guarantee at any point in time within the hour, somebody's gonna be parking on the street. So I really can't support this.
I have a problem making that pad in back larger. Now all of a sudden I got a road going beside somebody's house for the backyard. And albeit it may not be a lot of traffic, but all of a sudden now this neighbor that's been enjoying some quiet has literally cars going back and forth, especially if it's visitor parking back there. And that's just not fair to the community at this point in time. So I can't envision making more parking in the backyard and increasing the traffic to the back with that either.
One of the, the question that I asked the staff was about parking because right away that was probably the first issue that I identified. And being a church pastor, I have the privilege to be able to go visit residences in these type of places. And I dread having to go to one that's in a cul-de-sac because I'm never gonna find parking. It's just, it's just the way it is. That's why I was asking about if there's additional parking on, onsite. But certainly with, with the garage being used, having to make a road basically, put bigger pads, well then, it's, seems to, it seems like this project is growing farther than, than it really should. So I agree with my fellow commissioners that at this point in time, the way the design is, I wouldn't, I can't support this.
Does, does parking, I know that the building's footprint does, but in general sense, does parking or pad or that type of improvement, does that count against the FAR?
It does not count against FAR right now, does it?
Okay.
What if nobody wants to make a motion, what do we do?
I don't have a problem making a motion.
Okay, well, go ahead.
You know, based on the discussion that we've had here, based on the input that we see from the applicant as well as the residents in the area, looking at this and its totality, totality of what it is and where it's at, I'm gonna make a motion that we deny. Sorry, I don't have the, but deny this project.
PHG 190012.
Thank you. PhD, where's that at? I can't see it. There it is. PHD 19-0012.
A second.
Okay, just to clarify, a yes vote on this is denied?
That is correct.
Seven yes votes, so the motion, the PHG 19-0012 is denied.
Chair span. So with that direction, the resolution that's provided as an attachment to the stock report number three will be revised to reflect that in the title. And also, the recitals will be corrected to show that rather than approval, it is denied and for the reasons stated through the oral deliberations as the findings of fact exhibit B to support the findings denied.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to G2.
Master and Precise Development Plan and Specific Plan.
All right, thank you for your patience, commissioners. Again, Adam Feinstone, Principal Planner, good evening. The project here before you is a request for a Master and Precise Development Plan and an amendment to the Downtown Specific Plan to allow for a 145-unit senior housing complex or senior housing project in the Gateway Transit District of the Downtown Specific Plan, specifically located at 220 North Quinn Street. The Downtown Specific Plan Amendment would allow for ground floor residential uses on the project site. It would revise parking requirements for senior housing projects in the Downtown Specific Plan area and would also reduce the amount of open space required in the Downtown Specific Plan area in order to encourage higher density developments. The proposed Master and Precise Development Plan for the 145-unit senior housing project would be a, would include four stories of residential uses above ground floor garage. It would have a large plaza and courtyard and podium deck and would reach a, and would have a, have a maximum density that would be proposed or would reach that density of 98.6 dwelling units per acre. So it's very close to the maximum allowance of 100. You'll see here the project site. It's northeast corner of West Cali Parkway and North Quinn Street. There's a private alley that runs to, along the east side of the property between the current establishment, which is a storage facility, and the commercial building here next to it, as well as another public storage or mini storage facility on the other end there. The Escondido Creek Flood Control Channel runs immediately to the north of the facility and fire station, City of Escondido Fire Station Number One is just immediately beyond that. Across the street from the facility here is the Escondido Transit District, or Escondido Transit Center from Springer Line there and a bunch of bus stops. And if you'll see down here, it's not depicted on the image, but this location is the old police department, police and fire headquarters where the Gigweed Grand Project is. police department, police and fire headquarters where the Gateway Grand Project is currently under construction. And directly across the other, on West Valley Parkway, there's a new bank being constructed. I think it's getting close to completion down here as well. So, the amendment to the downtown specific plan would involve three, I, three issues or three modifications. First would be to change the allowance for locations of residential land uses. The map figure on, contained in the downtown specific plan as figure two dash four currently requires ground floor retail or office uses along both street frontages. The amendment would, would allow residential uses throughout the property on the ground floor through the approval of the plan development permit. This image here will show you what we're looking at, the facility. If you see in this enlargement right there, that's the property with the street frontages here without that crosshatched mark, therefore they do not allow ground floor residential or retail. The other area of the site back here does allow that through the plan development permit. The proposed modification would basically expand that to be the whole site that would allow the ground floor residential through that plan development permit. So issue with this, the ground floor parking garage is proposed, and that is not a retail or office use, it's accessory use to the residential use above. This type of a, of a change or modification to that figure two dash four in the downtown specific plan is not unprecedented. Gateway Grand, the location that I had just mentioned, the old police department headquarters, they requested and received approval for the same type of request approximately two and a half, so years ago. That had the same issue with street frontages required and red retailer office use and interior of the site being allowed to be residential on that ground floor. So they were given the same consideration on that. Additionally, staff would like to make, make the commission aware that we've also been kind of contemplating a similar holistic downtown specific plan amendment that would look at the entire area and determine where retail uses and office uses are not necessarily appropriate, or where residential uses on the ground floor might be appropriate on properties that currently do not allow them. We'd be looking, you know, at targeted locations, obviously not longer in the avenue or things of that sort. But that's another, another item that would be for discussion on a different, at a different time. The second part of the amendment to the downtown specific plan would change the requirements for, parking requirements for senior housing projects. Currently, the downtown specific plan does not specify anything regarding, regarding senior housing projects and any difference for those projects versus the, any other type of multifamily housing project. The change that would be made would bring the downtown specific plan into alignment with the recent zoning code amendment that changed senior housing parking requirements citywide. It just did not apply to the specific plan because the specific plan is detailed directly in that document. So this type of amendment would be bringing the specific plan into conformance with city codes elsewhere, and it would be applicable throughout the entire specific plan area. The final amendment to the downtown specific plan would regard, would be regarding open space requirements. Currently, the downtown specific plan requires three hundred square feet of usable open space per dwelling unit. That open space can be a combination of common and/or private open space areas. Common areas are typically plazas or pool areas, landscaped areas, courtyards, deck, common community rooms, that kind of thing. They can be interior or exterior. Private open space typically is, or is balconies, decks, patios, that kind of thing. So basically, at this point, staff believes that the current requirement may be adversely affecting the development community's ability to provide the type of high, higher density housing that we desire for that downtown area. As detailed in the, in the staff report that you were provided, the ability to provide high density project, uh, high density housing while meeting that parking require, or that open space requirement, I should say, is, is pretty difficult. There hasn't been a project that we've seen in the past five-plus years that, or actually, I'm guessing in the history of Escondido since there haven't been these types of high-density projects until recently. There hasn't been a project greater than seventy units per acre that has been able to achieve that seventy unit, or that three hundred square feet per unit, open space requirement. So it's, it's proving that it's pretty difficult to actually hit that and provide that density. What the amendment to the downtown specific plan would do is it would tie the open space requirement to project density. So you basically would be rewarding applicant for providing a quality, high-density project by limiting or reducing the amount of open space needed in order to achieve that density. Additionally, a separate open space requirement would be proposed or provided for senior housing projects. The little table here identifies what those requirements for open space areas would be. As you'll see here, projects that are thirty dwelling units or an acre or less would require three hundred square feet of open space per unit, which is the same as currently codified. Anything between thirty and fifty dwelling units per acre, so this would be projects of the like of Gateway Grand, some garden-style apartments. Those would be requiring two hundred and fifty square feet per unit, and then anything above fifty units per acre would require two hundred square feet per unit. Senior housing would then be a hundred and fifty square feet per unit regardless of density, or regardless, yeah, regardless of density. The other aspect is that the amendment would also change the allowance to reduce the amount of open space through a development agreement, I'm sorry, through a plan development. It would change the reduction amount to be unlimited, well, obviously there'd be some open space definitely necessary, but it wouldn't limit that reduction to fifty percent of the required. Some instances, you'll get a project that might be proposing, or there, there's a possibility a project could propose a really amazing community amenity adjacent to their project or opening part of their site up to, to community use for public open space that might drop them to forty percent of the, of the required open space. And we wouldn't want to preclude some type of project like that because they're beyond that fifty percent reduction. So that reduction percentage would go away, and we would also be proposing to address this through just a plan development permit, not requiring a development agreement for this type of a request. Finally, the last thing to look at as far as these open space requirements would be that the, that we should tighten up and give a little more specificity to what is considered open space. Currently, there's no minimum requirement for the size of an open, of an area to be considered open space. I think there's a ten-foot minimum dimension, but we believe it's appropriate to require at least two hundred square feet in any individual area in order for that to be considered open space. That's the size of a one-car garage, so even that's not that large, but require, allowing a ten-by-ten area to be considered open space probably doesn't serve the purpose that's, that's proposed for, that it's intended for. The other thing would be to exclude set, required setbacks from rights away from the open space calculation. So if someone had a requirement for an eight-foot right-of-way that's landscaped, and then they provided two more feet, that you couldn't use that entire ten feet, you'd only be able to use that two feet by whatever the length is, whatever that might be. In addition, actually, there's a requirement that's already in the code to require any minimum dimension for a landscape, or for an open space area to be ten feet. So you would need at least ten by twenty at this point to get any area qualified. All right, now on to the project itself. The applicant has proposed the master and precise development plan for the senior housing project, one hundred and forty-five units on the subject property there at two twenty North Quins. It would be age-restricted by covenant, net density of ninety-eight point six units per acre, and it's possible that they would, that it would be an affordable housing project, though not, not necessarily for sure. I know that the notice and the description on the, on the cover sheet of the staff report had indicated as such, however, the applicant had, had informed me that they're not, that they have not yet aligned any funding for affordable housing, or affordable housing dollars, and do not want to be tied to that should that requirement not come through, or should that funding not come through or be obtained. The requirement for it being age-restricted, though, is definitely going to be part of it, based specifically on the parking requirement that is being achieved for the project. So as I said, it's a hundred and forty-five units, a mix of studios, one and two-bedroom units, and you're ranging anywhere from six hundred twelve square feet for the studios up to eight hundred and sixty-nine square feet for the two-bedroom units. Units on all floors would be either accessible or adaptable to become accessible units for, for ADA compliance. There'd be a hundred and forty-two parking spaces on site, so it's actually significantly more than would be required by the new senior parking requirements. I think that number would be a hundred and twenty, but it's less than the, than what would be required for, for a standard multifamily project. It's almost one per unit, which is pretty, pretty good considering the nature of the project, the senior project typically doesn't have that same demand. Be a large plaza and courtyard and other residential amenities, and all the units would have private patios, decks, or balconies. Proposed building would have a modern architectural design and would use various colors and materials to provide visual contrast. The design also includes recessed project, recessed and projecting decks and balconies, and an observation deck with illuminated artistic panels. The elevations here show the different materials and finishes. We'd have stucco finish that would be either white, burnt yellow, terracotta. There'd be metallic silver siding, which is these kind of areas here that I'm marking or showing on the, on the image on the screen there. There'd be metal eyebrows, awnings and canopies, and then balconies would be either metal or glass rail there. The observation deck that I mentioned with the illuminated artistic panels is, is one of the unique art, unique features to this project. Applicants proposed color-changing panels with, I, I think it's supposed to be some sort of a wrought iron type design, which can be changed as far as what the actual image would look like, but the color-changing panels behind there would rotate. I don't know if anyone's noticed, along Interstate seventy-eight, near Twin Oaks, I think there's something similar. It's just single-color panels that, that change. I'm sure they're screening something behind there, but I guess it's something similar to that idea, but more of an artistic feature. And as you'll see on here too, that similar panels would adorn the underside of the canopy above that second-story observation deck. So it'd be really a unique and, and appealing architectural feature to the project. Ground floor residential, I'm sorry, street-level residential would include street trees and above-grade planters along here. There's a sewer line that runs along Quins there that would be pretty close to where the street trees are proposed, therefore requiring above-ground planters for those street trees would preclude the issues with root infiltration, or whatever that word would be, into that sewer line. So, got to avoid those concerns. There's also raised planters that would be included along the fronts of the building there, and they would also serve as stormwater detention. And enhanced paving would be provided here at the residential entry for the, for the project too. On the podium deck, there, there's a significant plaza area here, as well as another courtyard there. Plaza has balcony, has barbecue islands, outdoor seating, trellis structure through here, planters and accent trees, et cetera, enhanced paving too, that's in both areas. There's also a community room here. There are common laundry facilities, which are on the upper floors and also in an area, I think it's somewhere in this vicinity on all the floors. And then this is that observation deck that I had mentioned, where they've got that view out into the corner of Grand, I'm sorry, the corner of Valley and Quins. It's got that canopy above it with the, with the color-changing panels. Property would have a hundred and forty-two parking spaces in the at-grade garage. Be gated access, which would be open during daytime hours in order to pre, preclude queuing of vehicles and blocking traffic here along, along Quins Street during busier hours. Gated access would be obviously with through remote. There's conditions on the project that would require parking and garage access and maintenance plan prior to issuance of permits. A passenger delivery and, or delivery and passenger loading, unloading zone would be provided right here along the front of this project, near the residential entry there before resident pickup, drop-off, Uber, whatever other DoorDash and other services, as well as deliveries for postal and for carriers, move-in, move-out deliveries, that kind of thing, move-out trucks, I should say. West Valley Parkway would also be widened by seven feet in order to allow ultimate width and striping for bike lane there too. Project underwent an environmental review, was a draft mitigated negative declaration was circulated for thirty days. We received comments from three entities. They were all addressed in the final M N D, and no revisions were required to the draft document. Mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program have also been included with the M N D, and those are included as conditions of the project approval. Should be noted that approval of the project would, would include adoption of that M N D and the reporting program as well. With that, staff recommends that the, that the planning commission recommend, well, that they adopt resolution two thousand nineteen dash one, dash fifteen, which would recommend city council approval of the proposed specific plan amendment and plan development permit, which is the master and precise development plan, as well as adoption of the finding mitigated negative declaration prepared for the project. Be happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Couple real questions. I didn't see it on the plans, but I looked, I didn't look at them very long. Yeah, ADA parking, I didn't see a call out here. Is it in there?
It is there. They do meet the requirement for, for building codes there.
Super. Is there any plan by applicant to incorporate a solar component?
Uh, the roof plan does show solar panels.
Is that in our plans?
I believe it's in the full-size plans.
Okay, all right. I missed that one. Good. And then, in a general sense, maybe it might not even apply to this project, although it might. Can we do, as a city, can we do stuff with, with open space like we do on a project that we're working on right now with Coastal Sage Scrub at the Daily Ranch Bank? Is the same kind of thing available for planning, where you can do that with open space by a, by a extra square, hundred square feet at Kit Carson?
You're talking like banking, like using an open-space bank, not just for mitigation? We've talked about that, but really haven't gotten...
Yeah, the, the South Center City Specific Plan allows modification to the onsite required provisions of open space, provided that it's in a centralized location and accessible by the public. So they are essentially purchasing off-site or buying into something and making it publicly available. There might be future opportunities to consider the same with the Climate Action Plan, more specific to like carbon sequestration efforts, like adding landscaping to a property for the number of trees. Obviously, in an urban-rich environment like downtown, projects aren't going to be able to accommodate hundreds of trees, but they might be able to pay an in-lug credit that might offset that requirement. So I think the Climate Action Plan may invite that conversation, and I think we'll be monitoring the progress of the South Center City Specific Plan. There is one project in particular that is doing just that, looking to purchase adjacent property and making it publicly accessible like a public park. So we'll monitor the effectiveness of, of that strategy, and if it works out, then we consider broader applications. But for right now, only the downtown specific plan allows modification through the payment of an in-lug fee, which is considered ad hoc, on an ad hoc basis through the development agreement terms. But clearly, as Principal Planner Feinstein indicated, our existing standards for required open space are just far too high for our downtown environment.
Very good. Thank you both.
There, there is a widening on the Parkway to the toll booth there. Is there anything in the even near future that's going to widen the rest of it where the T-shirt shop is, and, or is it going to be like on East Valley where there's, there's that one little island that will probably never be widened?
Yeah, right now, there is no, at least, you know, what we call capital improvement project being funded for additional widening. We just have taken this opportunity as, as these properties redevelop here. As you'll note, the bank across the street, they're widening their side as well. Probably at some point, you know, you get down to a property or two, and then the need catches up, and we do fund a C I P project at that point. But right now, there isn't.
I think one single property on East Valley. I think one single property on East Valley is narrow. So I was just curious if I would ever see West Valley widen there, hopefully. And that's given me maybe fifteen more years.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, you know, the next property, you know, to the east, the t-shirt shop, you know, all or some portion of that might redevelop. Don't know.
Any other questions, Stan?
Right now, it's considered senior housing. Is that permanent for the CIP?
Correct. It's the deed restriction, I think it's a fifty-five-year typical for that.
I'm going to open the public hearing. I have speaker slip here, Matthew Jumper.
Evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. I'm Matthew Jumper, I'm the president of Interfaith Howden, we're the owner and proposed developer here, and I'm simply here to answer your questions. Thank you for having me.
Anybody have a question? Thank you. Does anybody else in the audience wish to speak about this? See none, or come on?
Actually, my name is Matthew Jumper, and my concern is that my family owns three of our house, so we're, you know, we're concerned for the businesses.
Can you speak, Ms.?
I'm sorry. We're concerned for the businesses around there, just how that would affect us and stuff like that. I guess the legal party, I think it's already an issue with us, definitely, because especially on the weekends, just let's say the residents, you know, they have visitors or whatever it is, you know, that's our concern. Yeah, sorry, this is my first time, I've waited here speaking.
Okay. Thank, did you have something else to say? And would you please fill out a speaker slip before you leave?
Good evening. My name is Maritza Revolcava, Ashley, at least my sister. So our family opened the business over thirty-five years ago. We've been in Escondido for, since nineteen eighty-two, so we've been here for a while. We're on five-two-five West Second Avenue, so we're right there on the corner of Second Avenue and Quint. So this project would be pretty much directly across the street from us. Right now, as my sister mentioned, on the weekends, we are at capacity, I mean, at the weekend. We have right now roughly about, give or take, fifty spaces on our business in our parking lot, and as I mentioned on the weekends, it's at full capacity. All those spaces get used. So what our customers do is they find parking on the street and, you know, surrounding areas. But as you all know, that area is not good for parking. I mean, I think we all know that, since Grand Avenue doesn't have a lot of parking, same issue as, you know, where we're currently at. So, yeah, that's a big concern. Let's see. So basically, we need all the parking spaces we can get. So having this project across the street from there would definitely affect us if they went in the street. I think that would definitely affect us negatively as well. Just that, this is not a bad project, but I feel like it should go somewhere else that's, you know, more appropriate for that. You know, Escondido likes tourism, you know. We get a lot of tourists, we get people from different parts of the city, from out of the city. We get tourists, a lot of tourists to our restaurant, so we wouldn't want to affect, you know, the flow of, you know, basically, customers coming into the city. Let's see. I guess that's my major concern, so if you would consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything to add? Okay, closing public hearing. I ask for Commissioner Cohen.
I'm all for senior housing projects, but I don't think there's enough of it around, and if more could be added, the better. Happy with the aesthetic and everything, so it's shown. Parking is parking. And I, there's ample parking spaces for the establishment, and I'm in favor of what I've seen.
I just want to address your concern about parking and how this project is going to affect you. The only thing you should be concerned about is all these people that don't want to cook that are going to walk from their apartment over to your restaurant. Your business is going to boom, and your parking problem is not going to be created because of this development. It's going to be created by the same people that are causing the problems now, so I really think that you're hiring more people or doing something to accommodate the business. I also think it's a great project. I'm not a big fan of high density, but this is the place to put it. I think it's a great project, great use of that space, and I think that you might see that road widen when this is so successful that they tear down the rest of that and do that from a corner and something similar. That's when you'll see it widen all over.
It's actually also nice to see some buildings that have been empty for so long, and such a nice order actually becomes something useful in this area.
I'm just add, echo Commissioner Cohen's, absolutely. I mean, that place is lying fallow. I mean, that's just a quiet, dead area, underutilized, and man, I love this project. I guess my question for Mr. Jumper would be what took us? It's a great project, certainly adds my support. Thanks.
I just want to add that I agree with the project, and I also agree with the amendments to the downtown specific plan, because I think, I think they are needed to bring that compliance with the rest of the city and senior housing.
Well, my fellow commissioners said all the things that I wanted to say as well, so I have nothing to add. I think this is a really good project. I think it's needed for Escondido, and I, too, support the changes to the downtown specific plan.
One of the things that frustrates me when I chair my church board is that a lot of times, members want to keep repeating the same thing, so I'm not going to do that. The food's great, I love eating at your place, so I feel that there'll be a lot of the residents, once they discover we want to add, they'll be eating there a lot, so.
Somebody want to make a motion?
Make a motion, pass PHG seventeen dash zero two eight, North Quint Street, Senior Housing Project. Second.
Commissioners, before you vote, if I may, there, we did also include a small change on one of the pieces of written communication that you provided. I should have brought this to your attention earlier, but there was one minor modification to the planning condition number C nine that we'd like to see, would basically allow, as you see on the piece of information that was handed out, it'd allow other methods of screening that would be acceptable to the community development department in order to screen the parking area, not just louvered vents. The applicant had expressed some concerns that that might not be the aesthetic that they would be interested in providing. I know that there's other ideas out there. Our goal is just to preclude the ability that you're looking right in at our garage, so as long as that's done in some way, shape, or form, staff would support or would recommend that the information and language contained on the written communication in front of you, that that be incorporated into the approval, or into the motion, I should say.
So like I said, I'd like to make a motion to pass PHG seventeen dash zero zero two eight, two-twenty, North Quint Street, Senior Housing Project, with the planning division and condition C point nine, indicating the deletions of the envelope typeface indicated in the next section as well.
Second.
Okay.
So the master and precise development plan and specific plan amendment, PHG seventeen dash zero zero two eight passes. We'll move on to current business, H one. PHG eighteen dash zero zero four seven, the precise development plan for North Avenue Estates.
Okay. Good evening, Commissioners. This is PHG eighteen dash zero zero four seven, precise development plan for North Avenue Just a brief background on this project, it's a single-family residential development with three, four residential lots and five open-space lots. There was a tentative subdivision map and master development plan that were approved by City Council in January of twenty eighteen, under those project numbers, sub-seventeen dash zero 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 seven and PHG seventeen dash zero zero three four. At that time, the party that owned the property did not see the precise development plan, since they intended to sell the site to a developer, and they assumed that the developer would want to design the homes to their own standards. So a precise development plan, the purpose is to provide finely detailed plans consistent with the approved master development plan, things such as building elevations, colors of materials, signage, landscape, fencing, et cetera. When a precise development plan is submitted at the same time as a master development plan, the City Council considers both together and makes a decision on both. When a master development plan comes first and then the precise development plan comes later, the planning commission makes a decision on the precise development plan. And here's the project site, it's the north end of town at the intersection of North Avenue and Conway Drive, with Kwood Drive on the east side. Seventeen-point-two acre property. So there are four proposed floor plans, one, two, two-X, and three, with various bedroom customization options for each of those four plans. Additionally, there are three exterior styles, Spanish, Spanish Colonial, and Adobe Ranch. They do share some common features, such as stucco for main wall material and concrete tile roofing, but they do have some variation in decorative enhancements, such as Adobe Ranch incorporates a brick facade, and they have some elevation, they're honest to show you in a moment. Additionally, there will be three possible color palettes per exterior style, so nine palettes total. The developer will choose which house gets which palette. All of them incorporate neutral tones. The Spanish style incorporates the lightest shades, Adobe Ranch the darkest, with Spanish Colonial kind of in the middle. And my next several slides are the floor plans, and I won't go into great detail, because you do have a copy in your plan set. I will just quickly say that Plan One is the only single-story floor plan. It's twenty, sorry, two thousand seven hundred and twenty-two square feet. Plan Two is the first of the two-story floor plans. That is the second one right there. That's the second one for Plan Two. Two-X is similar to Plan Two, it has a larger garage and some additional customization options for the bedrooms. And Plan Three is the largest plan offered, and this one is notable in that it has a multi-generation suite or accessory dwelling unit included with it as a standard feature. And here are the exterior elevations. Again, there's three possible styles. These are the styles for Plan One, Spanish, Spanish Colonial, and Adobe Ranch. Plan Two. Two-X, as you can see, is pretty similar to Plan Two. And then there's Plan Three. And the applicant has provided a fencing plan for us. The majority of the fencing for this project will be either vinyl or block fencing. The vinyl fencing is primarily in between the individual lots, and in some cases around the exterior of the project. The block fencing is largely between homes and streets and homes and open-space areas. There are some areas of steel fencing, notably around Lot C, which is the bio-retention basin. One thing I do want to point out here, that a neighbor pointed out to me recently, there is, the pink areas are gates into mostly open-space areas. There's a couple of emergency access gates off of Kwood and Tamara. There's one gate at the corner of Lot One that leads into an open space, a twelve-foot wide open space buffer behind those lots, one through six. It's showing a gate right there off of North, but there's a fence on only one side. The neighbor's property, which is on, it's directly to the east of the project site, does not have a fence along his property line, so basically, there's a gate there that connects to a fence only on one side of the gate. So that gate may need to be relocated back so that it has a fence on either side of it or eliminated entirely. The precise plan also includes an entry sign at the corner of Lot One, at the project entrance. It will consist of a block wall, four feet in height, with high lasters that are four and a half feet, and aluminum letters on the face. And a landscape plan is provided with a master development plan, and a new one has been provided, and is substantially similar. The applicant, as a condition of approval, will have to submit a formal landscape package that includes irrigation details, water efficiency calculations for the review of both engineering and planning. So for the tentative map and the master development plan that were approved in two thousand eighteen, at the time those were approved, there was also an addendum to a previously adopted initial study in mitigating them to decoration, and the addendum recognized that the project would include a precise development plan. This precise plan does not propose any additional houses that weren't shown on the master development plan. It does not change the overall density of the project. The primary purpose of a precise development plan is to refine the design of the site. And our recommendation is that the planning commission approve PHG eighteen dash zero zero four seven, the precise development plan for North Avenue Estates, and adopt Resolution number two thousand nineteen dash seventeen. And I'm available for questions.
Does anybody have questions, staff?
Awesome presentation.
Thank you.
Quick question. On the cover sheet, I just didn't understand why, is there a reason it says City Council? Yes, I don't know. I figured, yes.
Oh, it should be no. It's just, yeah, it's just planning commission, sorry.
Yeah, perfect, I got you. That looks like a great project. Thanks.
Any other questions? I'm going to open the public hearing, and I have one slip here from the applicant, Sean Doyle.
Could you be Commissioner Sean Doyle, if there are any questions, if you have any questions, could you guys write up?
Anybody have a question?
We're in the process of working through a couple of outstanding items that we have out in North Avenue, some conflicts with dry utilities and the storm drain plan, but we hope that was resolved within the next month or so, and then there may be some additional coordination with the city staff at that point, have the plans to get this grading started later, maybe next year, and have the models open by October of twenty twenty.
Thank you. Does anybody else in the audience wish to speak about this? And if you would fill out a speaker slip when you're done.
Hello, my name is Jason Nack. I live at two-nine-three-four Lorschon Lane, at the foot, basically. What I'm specifically interested in is the twelve-foot setback. The setback is not the right word, but this space between my house and the new property. What I'm curious about, I was hearing, the hearing in January, was never really defined about who was going to maintain that, whether it would be public, whether it would be private. So I'd like that to be defined as it sits right behind my house. How would it be maintained? Will it be private or public? Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak?
Hi, Paul Sheed, Attorney. My name is Robert Sawmeyer. I live directly adjacent to this project on North Avenue to the east. The, the, I've been in contact with Jared and the company, and I've been involved for about twelve years with the former development company that was part of the process. And I just raised a couple of the same things that staff did, and that is, on the, on the entry lot, on the backside of the entry lot, there is a gate that is currently on the backside of the wall or where the entry wall was, I think, for the staff to show.
Circling it right now.
So the, so there's, there's a gate there, but there's no fence line because there's, for a long, long time, there was no clarification where the property boundary line was. And a lot of the surveyors couldn't find the survey of, whatever monuments, I guess they're all. So we're, we've been waiting to determine where that is. And the former people that owned the property said they were going to build a block wall on the property line. So we only put a tentative fence near or inward to the property. So what, what the issue is, is that with that being open further to the, is the direction correct? Following the easterly border, there are adjacent property owners that do have fence lines. So as the former speaker said, there is a, there is a proposed twelve-foot, I believe it's a common area within the project with a vinyl fence on one side and then just a property line. The challenge is that the, the actual fence line is another twelve-foot. So you have about a twenty-five-foot opening at the easterly, and I think you can pinpoint this on your map, so we know what we're talking about. There's a twenty-five-foot, and that runs the entire distance, and it shallows down to twenty-five feet, twelve feet. So that's an open space with a, with a wall on one side and open space starting at twenty-five feet and going to twelve, or going to zero because it actually goes into a, just a twelve-foot space on the other end with a closed gate. The question is just trying to determine one, I believe the homeowners association will maintain that or maintain twelve and a half feet of it. But there's no line of separation, if you will, between the two. I wish I had a map, and I don't. But I'm trying to explain that there's going to be a kind of an alleyway down that thing. It's clear. So the neighbors and the people that were here are concerned about what's going to happen with that space. So I talked to staff and said, could we move the gate that's on North Avenue and put it to the, to the beginning where the fence line is? I've had some conversation, conversation with some of the neighbors and said, on the property that is owned privately on the other twelve and a half feet, that they would talk with the developer about putting a gate there. They could put a half, the developer could put a half gate in, the owner, the other owner and I put the other half gate in, just so we have a closed boundary and so people are not drifting into that space or people setting up things we would not like to have. So that's just an issue. Other than that, I love the project. There's a horse trail. I spoke to staff about. It looks like there's a trail or an open space for horses to go through for a portion of it, but it just stops at one point, and it wasn't clear to staff. How does it, how hard does that go? Is it go, will it be able to go through the project? And where does it, where would the horses or the people with horses go through? There's a lot of horses that go through the property. That was the other thing. Other than that, I haven't really covered my grade. I think it's a great project, and I think it will be a great opportunity to, to see improvement in the area. I think this is a great development. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak about this? Close the public hearing. Ask for Commissioner discussion.
I know that back when we first saw this, that, you know, the location of the homes and such were going to be coming along with the architecture. I think the applicant did a really good job with the architecture. I like the variety. I think it's a really good project.
So can we get some clarity to answer the resident's question, who would be responsible for maintaining that? I recall correctly, I may have asked that back last time. It seems like there's no clarity.
No problem. Second, I believe, I believe you all remembered that twelve-foot setback was, I believe, originally established to deal with some concerns about the existing septic systems, in particular of the homes that lived around Harshawn Lane and K Wood, as a result of, we can't, we have this gap that we need to deal with. The gap itself will, will actually be on the, on the lot, on the numbered lot. So it's technically home divided homeowner, but it will be maintained by homeowners association. So that was the, the bigger issue that we had, is trying to figure out the best way to secure this space in a individual one. It has the tendency or the ability to be attractive use, and so that's definitely something to work with. The neighbors are in terms of securing the gate to an, to an appropriate location. And then, what else? Yeah, so at this point, is the HOA is going to build each of the homeowners thing news into that, into the maintenance of that, that particular space.
Oh, there's, those were the two issues, just that space, who's going to be responsible for that, and the moving of the fence to figure out, so that the area is secure.
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would, yeah, I would just add that the way the conditions for the project ended up, it did specify that the HOA ultimately would be responsible for those areas. So that's how it's conditioned right now. Any other discussion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve PHG eighteen dash zero zero four seven and the funding commission, and adopt funding commission resolution two zero one nine dash one seven.
I can't... Is that a yes? Okay, so we have seven yeses. The, PHG eighteen zero zero four seven, precise development plan, North Avenue Estates, passes. Are, we have another meeting in two weeks?
We are, yes. We have one public time, public hearing item scheduled, and we will also have meetings in September, both meetings.
Oh, both meetings in September. Thank you. Any other comments?
September meeting, we would be on the tenth, right? The first one?
The tenth and the twenty-fourth.
I'll, I'll be out of country for that, so if you miss me, I'll be on. That's, that's it. It's on the two now.
Thank you. Yeah, and I will be coming back from North Carolina on Tuesday, but I will be here also. So we are...